So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the September 12, 2023, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Charles Harrell if he would give us an invocation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Gracious God, on a beautiful Tuesday morning, we gather here in this place today to do the business of the county. Lord, we also gather in the shadow of yesterday. We remember that day 22 years ago, a day of horror, but a day of resilience, a day in which we were reminded of the fragility of our buildings and structures, but of the great strength of the tapestry of our civil society. We pray that you would enable us to continue to build on that strength in our local as well as our national life. We thank you today, as we are gathered for opportunities to share in ways great and small, which tend to build that tapestry, such as the One Maryland, One Book Program. We thank you for the opportunity to come together around ideas and themes and to share freely one with another. We also thank you for the work of our Office on Aging and those who serve through programs and advocacy, through direct services and advisory work to build up the life of our seniors and those with disabilities in the county. We thank you also, Lord, for other special opportunities today, such as the groundbreaking for new county administration building and for all that represents, for those who will come and go from that facility over the years when it is completed, and for what it signifies in the life of our community. You have given us families and placed our families in communities. Help us, as we work together, to build its life through the work that is done and the business that is transacted here this day. Guide our commissioners, we pray. And, Lord, today, as we gather, it is also on Defender's Day here in Maryland, a day in which we remember the standing strong of our country during another attack 209 years ago. We thank you for the bravery of those who defended Baltimore and our state and pray that we would be worthy of the trust and vision that they have passed on to us these many years later. Go with us now, we pray, as we lift this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Harrell. So, is, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
I have none.
Second?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
A motion and a second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, I do have a couple of public service announcements, and if you listen to the prayer, Reverend Harrell did a very good job of covering our public service announcements for us today. We hope that yesterday everyone took a little time to remember what happened 22 years ago to this country and that we remember those that lost their lives that day and continued to lose their lives based on what happened that day. It was reported in the news that as many firemen have died since 9/11 because of the effects of that, that died that day in the attack. That's pretty sobering thought. So, we want to make sure that we keep all those individuals and their families in our prayers and never forget what happened that day and the cost of freedom. We always say, freedom is not free. And people every day give up their lives to support the freedoms that we have here and enjoy every single day, and we must never forget that. And also Reverend Harrell mentioned, it's Defender's Day. We want to make sure that we take a time to remember that occasion. And this afternoon at 2:00, we're going to have a very exciting event where the county's going to break ground on the new county administration building, located right here on Main Street. And we invite anybody that wants to attend at 2:00. We're going to put some shovels in the ground and start a very exciting journey for Calver County. So, and that's all I have at this time. You'll notice Commissioner Hart couldn't be with us today, so we're going to have a short meeting. No, Commissioner Hart, please don't take that offensively. So, at this time, our first item on the agenda is a proclamation. Commissioner Grasso, would you like to take care of that for us, please?
Do we have anybody here from North Beach, Calvert Pines, or Southern Pines who'd like to come up, say a few words, introduce yourself?
Thank you, Commissioner Grasso. They'll come up and introduce themselves and give the name of the senior center in which they serve.
Melinda Gaines, Southern Pines Senior Center.
Ann Perrin Sledge, Southern Pines Senior Center.
Kelly Jones, North Beach Senior Center.
Amy Batoham, Calvert Pines Senior Center.
Susan Gorman, North Beach Senior Center.
Grace Aller, Calvert Pines Senior Center.
Kristy Owen. All of them?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Taylor, Calver County Office on Aging. I support all centers.
Well, I thank all of you for being here today. I'm a senior, and I have been to the North Beach Senior Center. And I find that you all just offer such a valuable service in so many ways. I've been there for your lunches, your exercising, the different programs that you have. But I find, as I get older, so many of my friends are dying. They're leaving Maryland, and we have to make new connections. And the new connections for a senior is a lifeline. And the connections that they can make through the senior centers that you all offer to them are just invaluable for our senior citizens in this community, for their mental health, social health, to have friends to turn to. Without friends, I don't know how we survive in this world. So, thank you all for all you do. Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their experience and wisdom to help enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas North Beach, Calvert Pines, and Southern Pines Senior Centers have acted as catalysts for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of older residents in Calver County. And whereas, through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of Calver County to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And that is what I was talking about. That is just invaluable to our seniors. Whereas the three senior centers in Calver County affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. And whereas the Office on Aging staff and volunteers work diligently to provide opportunities for service, education, nutrition, and recreational opportunities for older adults in Calver County to improve the lives of all our citizens. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calver County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the immense value and worth of older adults and the opportunities that Calver County Senior Centers provide. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners expresses gratitude and appreciation for the Office on Aging staff and volunteers at Calver County's three senior centers for their contributions to our citizens, given under our hands and sealed this 12th day of September 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you very much. If you hold out for the picture, please.
Thank you. Smile. Stand forward, find the lens. Once again, once again, the picture, three, two, one. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
He's doing wonderful.
Have a great day. Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is our presentation from the Department of Community Resources, 2023 One Maryland, One Book. Director Moreland, good morning, Carrie.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Jennifer's giving you a copy of this year's One Maryland, One Book. When we've read a great book, we can't wait to share that experience and talk about it with others. It's one of the joys of reading. And in that spirit, Maryland Humanities created One Maryland, One Book, also called OMOB, to bring together diverse people and communities across the state through the shared experience of reading the same book. Since 2008, Maryland Humanities has gathered suggestions from the general public, educators, librarians, schools, book clubs, and other partners based on an annual theme. And the theme for this year is connection. As Commissioner Grasso said, connection is a super important thing for our well-being. I'm excited to announce that the 2023 One Maryland, One Book selection is There There by Tommy Orange. There There wonderfully captures this year's theme of connection. It was released in 2018, and it tells the interconnected stories of a cast of 12 Native Americans from across generational lines as they converge toward the big Oakland powwow. Some contend with sobriety and mental health, while others desire to preserve cultural dance and history. And meanwhile, a few others plan to rob the powwows' contest cash prize. Through these multiple facets filled with pain, humor, sorrow, and ambition, Tommy Orange gives readers a riveting modern portrait of the urban Native American experience. There There was one of the New York Times Book Review's 10 Best Books of the Year and won the Center for Fiction's first Nobel Prize, as well as the PEN-Hemmyway Award. So, this fall, the Maryland Humanities will collaborate with partners across the state, including libraries, schools, universities, book clubs, and local Native American organizations, to conduct programs where readers can connect with each other and discuss the book's themes. Programming takes place across the state from September to November. All events are free. And we'll be hosting book discussions in person and online in September and October. So, enjoy your book.
Thank you.
I'm sure Commissioner Hart is very sad to not be here today in particular, but he's probably waiting for the book.
He's probably reading the book right now, wherever he is.
He's at least listening to it, right?
I'm sure he is. Yeah.
Good. Any questions?
No. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, the next item on the agenda is an appointment.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Katie Britton, the clerk to the Board of County Commissioners. You have one appointment today for the Veterans Affairs Commission. Staff request the board reappoint Matthew Blackwelder. Following that appointment, you will have no vacancies remaining.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we reappoint Matthew Blackwelder as the District One representative to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Second.
A motion and a second that we reappoint Matthew Blackwelder as the District One representative to the Veterans Affairs Commission. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consent. We have several items under consent today. Item one, Department of Public Works, major subdivision final plat for Producent Commons, SDFP-138224. Item two, Department of Public Safety, budget amendment for hazard mitigation grant 4261-18. Item three, Department of Planning and Zoning, recertification of development options for Agricultural Preservation District 03-202RJK Incorporated. Item four, Department of Community Resources, FY 2024 Local Early Childhood Advisory Council Quality Improvement Grant. And item five, Department of Public Works, Calver County Twin Beach Library Increase in Contingency Funding. Are there any objections to those items today under consent?
None.
Hearing, none. Those items will be adopted as presented. We are ahead of schedule. New business, that'll, we'll jump to new business. And item one, under new business, Department of Finance and Budget, repeal resolution 27-07 and resolution 52-20. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Director, Deputy Director.
I'm here for the ride, so to speak.
Sharon, do.
Aren't we all?
Yes, right. Do the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sharon Strand, the Accounting Deputy Director of Finance and Budget. I'm just going to go ahead and read the memo. And the subject is repeal resolution 2707 and resolution 52-20. Background, the Board of County Commissioners, set by resolution 27-07, empowered the Director of Finance and Budget to make administrative transfers of appropriations up to $10,000 and establish the county administrator's authority for administrative transfers of appropriations up to $25,000. Resolution 27-07 further authorized the B OCC to approve budget adjustments up to $100,000 without an adoption of a resolution and was amended in 2018 to authorize budget adjustments up to $150,000 without adoption of a resolution. The B OCC, which is the Board of County Commissioners, also set by resolution 52-20, empowered the county administrator to execute certain documents, licenses, applications, agreements, and reject certain bids on behalf of the county, as well as certain personnel actions. Discussion. In an effort to streamline government processes, staff recommends the following updates related to budgetary authority and the delegation of signature and approval authority as outlined below. First, budget amendment authority. The county administrator increased from $25,000 to $50,000. Budget amendment authority, Director of Finance and Budget, increased from $10,000 to $25,000. Signature authority, Director of Finance, signed contracts up to $10,000. Fiscal impact, there is no fiscal impact. Conclusion recommendation. The Department of Finance and Budget is requesting the B OCC to review and, if appropriate, approve to repeal resolution 27-07 and 52-20 and adopt revised provisions related to budgetary authority and the delegation of signature and approval authority.
So, you want to speak to the reason for these changes?
As prices increase, commodities increase, and researching and looking at other local counties, we are more in line with what other counties have signature and budgetary authority to.
What was, on the signature authority, what did that increase to? What was it previous?
So, the signature authority, the Department of Finance and Budget, did not have any signature authority to sign small, multi-year contracts.
Okay.
So, it's just increasing or increasing authority to small, multi-year contracts.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Discussion? Motion?
I have a motion. I move that we approve and adopt the resolution reflecting the repeal of resolutions 27-07 and 52-20 and adopt the enacted recommended resolution to revise provisions related to budgetary authority and the delegation of signature and approval authority.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will take us to item two, under new business, Department of Community Resources, budget adjustment for Calvert Library per capita increase. Good morning, Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Wilson, Executive Director of Calvert Library. Background, Calvert Library has received a per capita increase to the fiscal 2024 funding through the Maryland State Library Agency. Discussion. The per capita increase of her last year's state funding is an additional $50,710 to support library services in the county. Fiscal impact is none. Conclusion recommendation. Calvert Library is requesting the Board of County Commissioners a review and, if appropriate, approve budget adjustment
So, you want to talk for a minute about where this money comes from and why you got more?
Sure. There is, in the state education code, is not only the layout of how public libraries are governed, but also how they're funded. And so, there's a per capita funding increase that we librarians go to Annapolis every three or four years and request additional increases to our per capita funding to help the balance between county funding and state funding, maintain some semblance of, well, a relationship, let's put it that way. So, this increase in funding is the state's contribution to the increased expenses for programming and services.
And you would use that money for?
We are, we are going to put it for now in contracted services. And then, in a couple months after we've discussed more fully the funding request for additional staff for Twin Beaches, depending on how that conversation goes, those funds will either go towards additional services, or they will be contributed towards salary for the increased number of staff for Twin Beaches. So, it's up for discussion.
Speaking of Twin Beaches, do you have a projected date?
We don't have a firm date yet. They're still looking at turning it over, sort of occupancy in early February. So, hopefully, an early, mid-March opening. That's my optimistic. And so far, everything's on schedule, so.
There's a lot of conversation about it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's really looking good.
It is looking good.
Yeah. It'll be in the dry by the end of the month, so it's exciting.
Just in time for the snow.
Yeah. It'd be a white grand opening then.
Motion?
Yes, yes, sir.
Move that we approve and adopt budget adjustment BA 2024-106.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item three, under new business, Office of the County Administrator, Fiscal Year 2023 Connected Devices Program Grant Application Round Two. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I'll just start out by reading the memo.
Who are you?
My name's Danielle Russell, Grants Management Program Specialist with the County Administrator's Office. I'm sorry.
And I'm Ashley Staples Reed with the Office of the County Administrator, Special Projects Program Manager.
Thank you.
Now, background, the state of Maryland has appropriated $30 million for the Department of Housing and Community Development to support the Office of Statewide Broadband in its efforts to assist in digital equity and inclusion efforts in Maryland. As part of Maryland's plan to address the digital divide, the OSB has introduced the Maryland Connected Devices Program. The CDP provides grants of Internet-enabled devices to counties and municipal governments to distribute to their eligible households. Eligible households are identified as a household with an income at or below 200% of the federal poverty guidelines, households enrolled in the federal Affordable Connectivity Program, and/or households participating in certain government assistance programs. The period of performance for the program is six months upon receipt of devices, and qualifying households may receive only one device per address. Devices are valued at $198.75, and a stipend of $6 per device is available to the grantee to assist with the cost of distribution. During round one of the CDP application requests, 91,300 devices were awarded. Round two of the application requests will award the remaining allotment of devices. The OSB has indicated that applications for round two are due by September 18. Minor change, they did extend that to September 30. And new eligible applicants will receive priority for funding. Calver County government staff have coordinated and identified Calvert Library as a distribution partner and intend to apply for 2,500 devices. Fiscal impact. If awarded, the grant will provide up to the requested $511,875 in devices, totally $496,875, and stipends, $15,000. There is no required match for this award. Conclusion and recommendation. Staff request the B OCC provide, approve, and authorize the Board President to sign the application and all subsequent grant documents on behalf of the Board.
So, give the Commissioner Hance version of what So give the Commissioner Hans version of what this all really means.
We are getting some laptops from the state Chromebooks, uh, from the state. They've already bought them with ARPA funds, um, and we're to distribute them to low-income individuals. We're using Calvert Library. They volunteered beautifully as partners for distribution. So we're going to host distribution events, possibly extending that to offering them just at the library towards the end of the six-month period.
And so when do you expect that distribution period?
We did ask, uh, we haven't received guidance back from T A, but we're expecting early twenty-twenty-four, so probably late January, early February for beginning distribution.
In time for the grand opening, we can give out free Chromebooks.
Yep.
That is the intention.
Yeah. And it's, uh, half a million dollars. And how many devices does that amount to?
Two thousand, five hundred devices.
And have you identified how many households qualify in Calvert County?
So, we looked at a couple of different data points. Um, Jennifer pulled a lot of data about SNAP program, Medicaid, as well as just who falls in that federal poverty level. Um, so this is a little bit of a between the numbers. A lot of those numbers are going to overlap. So we have just over four thousand folks on SNAP? Yeah, on SNAP. Um, then sixteen hundred qualified on that federal poverty guideline, so we went somewhere in the middle. Also accounting for Charles and St. Mary's, they got devices in the first round. Um, they did offer some devices to Calvert County residents, since we did not get them in the first round. So, uh, we want to make sure that if somebody comes over from St. Mary's or Charles, we can reciprocate that.
When I heard they were doing that, I wondered why Calvert County wasn't in the list.
We did miss the deadline for the first round. As did a lot of, um, smaller counties, and so that's why they did do the second round and open it up. So we are very grateful for the state to do that, yes.
And what's your outreach plan?
So, um, we are partnering with, um, Maryland Extension, University of Maryland Extension, and they are working with, uh, Charles and St. Mary's right now. So they kind of have already experienced what some of these counties are doing, and we really don't think a whole lot of radio ads and things like that are going to be needed because we know the target. We know our population. Um, we can reach out to them through D S S, Department of Social Services, through, um, C C P S with the public school system. Um, and, and really, the population is already identified. So we are able to do advertisements if needed, but, um, we're gonna see what kind of turnout we get. We're gonna do distribution events in accordance with the library. Um, so we have a couple, you know, in mind of when and how often we're gonna do them. And then if we need to utilize that fund for advertisement, we will. Um, but we really think that stipend is really gonna be for volunteers and overtime for our technology services staff to come on and do troubleshooting and, um, education for, for the devices, for the people that are gonna be receiving them. And we think that's gonna be a lot more valuable in the long run.
Director Moreland's probably been, already been to all their houses. Helping them in some other way.
I'm sure she has on the wall on speed dial.
Yeah.
And what is SNAP?
So, um.
I know it stands for something.
The Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Programs.
Okay, okay, that's what it is, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's the official term for food stamps, yes. For food assistance.
Sure, if I had to question, somebody else did too.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I've none.
Sorry.
We want a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move that we approve and authorize the Board President to sign the application and all subsequent grant documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we can have a, no, well, sure we can.
Hold a moment of silence.
I could tell a joke, but I won't. So I think by the time I get my paperwork straight, we can hold a public hearing. Walk slowly. So ladies and gentlemen, we have a public hearing scheduled for ten-thirty. According to the law, we can't start that hearing before ten-thirty because we've done notice, and the clock just struck ten-thirty. So at this time, um, we have a public hearing scheduled for Department of Public Works Option Agreement for One Ten Main Street, Prince Frederick, Maryland. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How are you?
Morning.
Tom Jones, Deputy Director for D P W of General Services. I have a little piece here to read prior to the memo. Since there's one public hearing scheduled for today, all hearings were duly advertised, and the certificate of publication was made part of the record at each hearing. Citizens were invited to provide comment with the hearing after each presentation was concluded. Anyone here in person must sign in at the sheet next to the county attorney's office, county attorney's seat, excuse me. With that, I'll start the memo. Background: The Board of County Commissioners entered an option agreement on June one of twenty-twenty-three with Army Road LLC for One Ten Main Street, Prince Frederick, Maryland. The option provided an opportunity to relocate staff to, to a new facility. Environmental Phase One study was conducted and had determined the property to be satisfactory. Discussion: The Department of Public Works General Services Division engaged negotiation with the property owners of the parcel of One Ten Main Street, Prince Frederick, Maryland. D P W extended a purchase option agreement with the property owners, accepted and signed. The planning commission found the subject property to be consistent with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan. Physical impact? The agreed sale price amount of two million, fifty thousand. The deposit, a deposit of one hundred thousand was tendered at the time of the signing of the option agreement. The necessary funds are accessible within the Fund Balance Ledger Account Three Five One Zero Zero, General Fund One Zero One Zero Zero. Conclusion: Recommendation: The Department of Public Works General Services Division requests the Board of County Commissioners review, and if appropriates, if appropriate, approve the exercise of the purchase option presented, and authorize the Board President to sign the purchase and sale agreement and settlement, settlement documents on behalf of the Board.
Ask, there are folks here who've joined us virtually. If you wish to speak at the public hearing, please use the raise your hand function.
The floor has been open for public comment on this hearing. Resolution six dash eight-nine was adopted and is available here today to maintain the order and decorum of the government process. Those attending in person will be invited to speak first. For those joining virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine, or use the raise your hand function.
And there are no speakers.
Virtual participants will be identified, placed with digits. Speakers who are providing comment as individuals will be allowed two minutes. Speakers who are the designated representative of a group will be allowed at five.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no speakers.
There are no, no one has signed up, and nobody's raised their hand, so there are no speakers.
So just for public information, uh, we were approached by the owners of this property that they wanted to sell the property. Uh, we use a state-approved process where we do appraisals and, um, while some may say, well, you're getting ready to build a new county administration building, why are you buying more office space? Uh, that county office building, uh, uh, was built based on, I don't know how, I want to put this, uh, based on the funds, uh, you know, funds come into play. And while it is gonna hold the majority of our county services, it will not hold one hundred percent of our county services. And we saw this as an opportunity to acquire office space at what we considered a reasonable cost to fulfill our needs of those, uh, surplus space that we still would need after we build this new building. So, uh, we looked at the property. It was deemed appropriate, adequate, and in good shape, and came to agreement with the owners, and that brings us to conclusion today. Did I cover that appropriately?
I think so.
Turnkey operation and.
Yeah. So, um.
It keeps everything on campus.
Trying to keep everything centralized as much as we can, yes. So, um, we could have built a bit of bigger building, but it would have cost a lot more money, so. So, anyway, any other discussion or questions?
I have none.
Motion?
I have a motion for you, sir. I move that we close the record and authorize the Board President to exercise the option by signing the purchase and sale agreement and settlement documents.
Second.
Have motion in a second that we close the record and authorize the Board President to exercise the option by signing the purchase and sale agreement and settlement documents. Is there any discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go get it cleaned up, Marigan. That brings us to old business, item one, Office of the County Administrator Comcast Buildout Update. Good morning. Seems like we just saw you. But I don't remember who you are.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Ashley Staples Reed, Special Projects Program Manager with the Office of the County Administrator. Um, I would like to, if it's okay with the Board, forego the memo, the memo, as it's all contained within my presentation update. So, um, I'm just giving you a, a broad overview of what we've kind of done as far as the Comcast buildout has gone so far of twenty-twenty-three. We do have these slides in here just kind of as a placeholder to go over the franchise agreement that we have with Comcast. So according to the F C C, cable franchise agreements, they do address provisions of, uh, cable television service in exchange for use of the public right-of-way, but they do not address broadband or internet services. They do kind of hand-in-hand.
Can I interrupt you for just a minute? So just for those out there that may not know what, uh, what, what we're talking about, I'm gonna give you a little background, because we're very proud of this. In twenty-seventeen, the Board voted to extend cable service to every household in Calvert County. Uh, at that time, we had no assistance from outside revenue sources. Uh, we took that on, uh, because, uh, COVID had just started, and we identified a serious need. People trying to work from home, children trying to do their schoolwork on the internet, and we were getting numerous calls from, uh, parents tired of sitting in fast-shoed restaurant parking lots to get Wi-Fi so their children could do their schoolwork. And the Board at that time was given a proposal to extend cable to every household in the county. And at that time, we were given a fiscal note of, uh, three and a half million, I believe it was, a little under four million dollars. Uh, we believed that was the widest investment, and that we were gonna move forward. Uh, I am gonna take credit. Uh, we were the first county in the state of Maryland to agree to do that. Uh, once COVID hit and, uh, money started pouring in from federal and state resources, a lot of counties started to identify and try to do the same thing we were doing, but we were first. And while we were told this process was only gonna take about a year and a half, um, more people signed up than we thought. And, uh, because of issues with supply issues during COVID and the additional homes that came online, it got extended and extended, but I think we're getting pretty close, as you're gonna hear in the, this presentation. But, uh, I heard that, uh, last week, there was a local radio station talked about how uh, local governments didn't use ARPA money to really, ARPA money to really put in infrastructure to help their citizens. And we had already done that without ARPA money, so I'm gonna take credit. And, uh, while it wasn't this board, the previous board, uh, took a big step. And, uh, what, what we're doing today is working towards finalizing this project.
Absolutely.
So, I'm sorry, but.
No, no, thank you, Mr. Hans. No, and I'll, and I'll go on that. So, yes, we, we did think that it was gonna be a shortened timeline to do this whole buildout. And yes, there are some factors that have kind of gone into this process to extend it. But kind of at a higher level, it is the materials. And it is the fact that our neighboring counties have gotten funds that they are now utilizing. So now, um, I C Ps, which are Internet Service Providers, um, they are being stretched thin. So we utilize Comcast the most, so they are kind of deployed in all these different counties throughout Maryland. So it is difficult to, to be dedicated, but I am very fortunate that we do have a dedicated team here in Calvert for Comcast buildout. And I will expand some more on the timeline slide. There's a couple slides down to you as well. So again, the franchise agreement that we have with Comcast was signed in twenty-eighteen. I mean, that's a ten-year franchise that we have with them. And it does include a five percent franchise fee that does revert back to the general fund. It's about one point six annually. It does outline the density requirement to maintain fifteen homes per mile. Um, it extends the length of standard drop from one twenty-five to three hundred. So prior to, um, twenty-eighteen, if a home resided a hundred and twenty-five feet or beyond the distribution line, they did have a customer contribution cost. So we did kind of close that gap a little bit by extending it to three hundred feet. Um, and it does also provide a cost-sharing formula for when it does, um, exceed that three hundred feet extension. And again, it is a ten-year franchise, so it is up for expiration, renewal, um, in twenty-twenty-eight. So the buildout to date, um, we do have to go back to twenty-twenty-one when we did start all of these, these great initiatives. So in the spring, Comcast awarded, um, was awarded two point two million via the F Y twenty-one infrastructure grant to aid in phases one and two, which I'll expand on as well. But essentially, phase one was our barstow buildout. And then phase two were a cluster of smaller projects throughout Calvert County. And then in August of twenty-twenty-one, the B O C C temporarily removed that three hundred feet limitation enabling service to anybody, which is what Commissioner Hans was talking about before. And then in November of twenty-twenty-one, the B O C C approved to reimburse constituents between Jan. one and December thirty-first who had made customer contribution investments, which totaled about twenty-nine thousand dollars, which we paid out of ARPA funds. And then in August of twenty-twenty-two, we did allocate additional ARPA funds for, um, funding phase three. So we do have an earmarked total. Now we have started to utilize those funds, but at the very end of it, we had about four point seven million allocated in ARPA. By September twenty-twenty-two, phases one and two were completed. And then by October, we signed an agreement with Comcast to complete phase three, and Comcast began, began surveying, designing, and formulating our construction schedule. So now in April, Comcast was awarded an additional nearly a million dollars, nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two thousand via the F Y twenty-three infrastructure grant. And that's gonna help, um, service about thirty-six homes throughout the county. So it is, um, a nice little buffer of funds that we don't have to utilize ARPA for. And then in May, we signed the final grant distribution agreement, which closed out phases one and two completely. And then we did establish a cutoff date for June thirtieth for citizens to sign up for free connection. Um, this is a overview of funding. So phases one and two, um, we did have state funding, which was that two point two that was mentioned earlier. And then we did have a county contribution of one point four. Um, and then phase three, we have that nine forty-two, uh, hundred thousand. And then we have earmarked three point four. And then, um, franchise fees will be utilized when and if necessary, um, which I do believe at some point they will be necessary. We have earmarked, um, one point six of franchise fees from F Y twenty-two. Um, so we do have that, that can be utilized. And then if we do go beyond that, then we would have to have another conversation in regards to utilizing F Y twenty-four franchise fees potentially. And then I do want to issue at the bottom, the sole use of franchise fees was originally budgeted to fund this project. However, because of ARPA funds, state, state grant funds, and things like that, we've had to defer the need for that, which is wonderful. So overview of phases one and two, and this was, um, a slide that was presented to you guys back in my May update, but I do like to have this in here just for reference because it was a, a big haul. We connected three hundred and twenty-five homes across the county. Um, that was completed by fall of twenty-twenty-two. Um, it does outline the project, so, um, we have our barstow build, which connected a hundred and sixty-one homes. And then we have phase two, which is all of the preceding projects that were kind of smaller pockets of, of projects throughout the county. Do you guys have any questions about phases one and two?
Ashley, I have, I have a question.
Absolutely.
Um, the cutoff date was June thirtieth. How many citizens signed up as of June thirtieth?
So... We have four hundred and nine homes that have signed up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There it is.
Any other questions? Okay, so now on to phase three. So we began construction in spring of twenty-twenty-three. We have four hundred and nine homes that have been identified to connect within phase three. Um, as, to date, as the eighth, um, they've completed ninety-eight homes, which is thirteen point nine miles of infrastructure. Thirteen point six is gonna be underground, which is gonna be the bulk of what the work is. And then, um, approximate cost of what that's gonna be is one point six million. So that's where we're at right now as far as the cost. Um, we haven't gotten an official invoice yet. Um, they want to bill us on either a six-month basis or an annual basis. But they are giving us recurring costs, so we have an idea of how much we're spending to date. So that, that is very helpful. One of the issues that we are having is easements. And I will highlight that a little bit more in my next slide. But about two hundred properties have been identified as needing easements to build. This is causing, causing major setbacks. Um, and it's, it's really because citizens are completely just denying, um, easements. And we can't control that. Um, we are trying to do outreach, we are educating, we are doing site visits. Um, myself included with Comcast doing site visits to kind of remedy any questions that homeowners may have. Um, but that is gonna be a hurdle, and that is gonna bar some citizens from being able to receive connection if ultimately we do not get easements. So that is causing. So that is causing major setbacks, and that's really contributing to the timeline as well. So that's the major thing. That's more at a closer level as opposed to high level. So again, original prediction for the build-out completion was the end of the calendar year of 2023, but now pending due to issues with obtaining easements. So that's one of the big sticks that we're dealing with right now. Now, I will say throughout this process of identifying these homes that have signed up prior to the June date, staff has identified additional unserved homes that could be integrated into the current designs of Phase 3. It's going to be at variable additional costs. There are some situations that would be favorable. So there is going to be BOCC action needed to proceed with those particular cases. And I can certainly expand on that a little bit better when we get to that slide. So the construction process, and this is really, this is of course for you Commissioners, but this is also for the citizens at home that don't understand what's going to happen once they've been identified or an easement is needed in order to connect their neighbor perhaps. So a project is identified, meaning an address. Somebody signs up, lets us know that they want connection. Then the project is surveyed. It's ground survey. So you'll actually have Comcast representatives come out, and they survey the area to measure footage, where power supplies are going to be going, where equipment's going to be going, and things like that. Then it's designed. So it's really a process before you even see construction on the ground. And then permits and easements are going to be obtained. That's where a lot of the projects are at a halt. Because easements can be needed for the simplest of connections. Sometimes we need three or four easements just to connect a home. And if we don't receive all four of those easements, we cannot proceed with connection. So this has actually barred some residents from receiving connection. And again, that's not something that we really have much control over because it's well within a citizen's right to deny an easement. But there are negative consequences of that, and that's going to be denying access to broadband to some individuals who may have families, you know, small children at home that need, you know, internet access in order to get schoolwork done, things like that. So it's really a, it's unfortunate, but again, it's something that, you know, we try our best to educate, persuade, you know, talk, answer questions, things like that. But at the end of the day, if an easement is not granted, Comcast cannot do connections. But once all of the proper paperwork is obtained, then they start construction. Then they complete the construction, and then they do their last, you know, electrical testing, make sure everything's connected and testing properly. And then the project is released, and the citizen can sign up for whichever service they like, whether it just be cable, cable and internet, cable, internet, and phone. So that's really the process of A to Z. Any questions on that? So how does an individual find updates? So we do still have our Comcast build-out landing page. Once you go to the Comcast, I mean, the Calver County ND.gov page. So it's in the upper right-hand corner. And then that's where you're going to be able to ask questions, see the extension map, and that's really going to be your best tool right now. So our extension map is going to show where we're at in the build. So each individual dot has an address associated with it. And it can actually expand on information once you click that dot. So you can see what the projected timeframe is, where they're at in the process, if a state grant is associated with the funding of your address, things like that. And then if there was more questions beyond that, there is that opportunity to ask those questions on that landing page as well. And those would get routed to me. And then if it's an easement question, I can get our easement company that we deal with involved or Comcast involved. So the requested action for today, along with the update, is really just to address the unserved individuals that we've identified during the design process. So we have come into numerous scenarios that it's hard to set a criteria for and to quantify. So it's really on a case-by-case basis when we find a home that was not previously identified that can be easily integrated into an already-existing design, needs to be integrated into an already-existing design, or we can do a completely different design and integrate some homes. So it's really difficult to do asks for these builds because we're going to get them every step of the way when we do designs. So I think the easiest ask for me, and of course, I can certainly amend this ask however you guys need to, is to enlist the county administrator. The county administrator is well aware of this build-out, what's entailed, what's needed. So asking the county administrator to incorporate new homes on a case-by-case basis. I can certainly give you some examples of what we're facing with right now. So certainly right now, we have one home that has signed up, and their neighbor actually owns the right-of-way to the driveway. Well, the neighbor wants to be considered for extension as well. It's an additional couple hundred feet of connection, and it's actually going to connect the home that's already signed up. So that's one case. So we would need to extend somebody that wasn't already signed up in order to gain access to the person that has signed up. So that's a scenario. And then another scenario that we have right now is that we can actually do a completely different route to connect a home and save thousands of dollars and connect a couple of homes that will now be in the closer venue of the new design. So there are going to be scenarios where we can actually save money by redesigning and adding additional homes, but there are going to be scenarios where it's going to be at an additional expense. There are some scenarios where there is one home that's been identified. There's a couple of homes behind it that can be connected at additional fee. But it's favorable to do it now as opposed to later in the event that we do decide to revisit them and extend service because then we would have to redeploy constructions and surveys and things like that. So we are running into these issues even the three months after the June 30th deadline. So I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the best way to address these on a case-by-case basis. And I think if the authority was held in the county administrator's purview, that would be easier as opposed to me having to come potentially every week to bring these cases to you. I'm happy to ask if you have any questions. I know, that's a very big ask.
So Ashley and I have talked about this. And I want to thank Ashley publicly. And all of you out there don't know Ashley that well unless you've dealt with her. And she's a very passionate young woman, and she exemplifies customer service. And when we started this project, you know, in '21, we said, there's got to be a cutoff. You know, we're not going to do this forever. You know, this is your opportunity. We've got a plan in place. You sign up, and we're going to get you connected. But once you get past this point, you know, you can't sign up. We can't do, well, at least our perspective at that time was, we don't want to do this forever. So we've set a deadline. Maybe we've set two deadlines. But Ashley, in her desire to fulfill the needs of all the citizens of Calver County, you know, every once in a while, she says, these situations pop up where somebody didn't know the program was out there. You know, they just found out about it, and can't we just add them on? Is what Ashley tells me when she calls us. She says, Ashley, we don't have a deadline if we keep letting people sign on after the deadline, you know? And the rule was, there's a deadline, so.
And Commissioner, I do want to add that we are not considering brand-new builds. So if an individual has requested connection after the June 30th deadline, and that would entail deploying a whole new survey team and construction.
But I thought I just heard you say prior to this that it might require new surveys and new work.
It would, but if it's like a, so what we consider is a long drop. So say, beyond the 300 feet just to connect one home. That's considered a brand-new project that would need new deployment of surveys and things like that. What I'm proposing is integrating new homes if they're already in a existing identified project design.
I'd like to clarify that.
Yes.
Because I'm not sure I heard you say that before. And I understand, and my comments to Ashley when we talked about this was, yes, if they're in a neighborhood or they're on a street doing a run, and somebody lives on that street, say, hey, wait a minute, I didn't know this was going on. Can I jump on? Then, you know, yeah, we're right there. We're doing the work. It does concern me, though, if we're going to go out and do completely new designs, where does it ever stop? Or maybe you all don't want it to stop, but I'm just trying to relay the history of.
It's very complex.
Where we've been and compliment Ashley again on her desire to help our citizens. Because when people who live on private roads deny right-of-way to people that want to get internet, Ashley's a bulldog, and she does everything but threaten them with bodily harm to allow us to run these lines.
No, too not.
I think she's done that too.
I think so too. She says not, but I don't believe it.
But I have. I've gone on-site with Comcast to answer any questions from citizens. I am a notary, and those easements do need to be notarized, so I always go on-site if I have the opportunity to do so.
And she'll call me. Don't you know so-and-so? Could you call them because they don't want to grant a right-of-way? Please, call them, so. But that's what before you today, ladies and gentlemen, is Ashley wants the administrator to be able to allow these individuals to come in beyond the deadline with extenuating circumstances.
Extenuating circumstances.
And some parameters.
And if there is an address that's added, I would notify the Commissioners, certainly on a weekly basis. And then also, I would include it in my bi-monthly update, quarterly update, how often I come up in front of you guys on camera.
And you should, you know, I don't, I think you can do this without identified engineers, individuals. Talk about the cost of some of these drops.
Yes. So we are, prices are going up. Prices are going up, definitely. There is a certain build that they're doing this week that was quoted at, I think it was $80,000, 10 years ago. And now we're talking about 120, 130, sometimes 140, depending on how often they have to cut across the driveway. And it's to connect four homes. So it's a big haul. And then there's another scenario where we actually have to go into Andoroma County to get into a certain, to get back into Calver.
It's probably Commissioner Grass's house.
It could have been, but we're hooked up.
So once you start dealing with complex designs like that, it's easily a six-figure project.
And that's why a lot of these people had never connected before.
Absolutely.
Because they would call us crying that, you know, I can't afford $15,000, and my kids, you know, are in school, and they couldn't afford it.
It's an advantage of living in a rural area.
And that's what I would tell them. You know, there are pros and cons to living in rural areas, and unfortunately, this is one of the cons. You know, it's expensive, so they didn't, you know, we've been able to take care of those individuals. But I just wanted you to relay to people, this is not cheap in certain cases. It's very costly to do.
Absolutely. And as you guys saw earlier, it's about 13, let's say 14 miles of infrastructure that's been done, and that's 1.6 million dollars.
And I did hear, I don't know, St. Mary's or Charles, they were doing a presentation recently. Same thing. It's right-of-ways.
Yes.
Holding up projects.
Absolutely.
They can't move forward. It's private roads and.
And the real issue with that is Comcast, nine times out of 10, does go along the standard utility right-of-way. So they do run alongside, you know, SMECO lines and things like that, but they're not considered a utility. They're considered a communications. So they can't tap into already-existing utility easements unless it explicitly states for communications. So a lot of times, individuals will think that they're just trenching, you know, right down the middle of their yard, and that's not really the case. You know, nine times out of 10, they're going alongside already-existing conduit, kind of like BDC, I think, that's already there for the other major utilities. And that's what the site visits are for. So when we have areas that have questions, you know, Comcast and myself are more than willing to go down there and answer questions, run, walk the driveway, walk the yard, and kind of guide them in regards to where they're going to be doing directional boring or trenching, things like that.
Ashley, let me get this straight in my mind. You've identified as of June 30th, 400-plus homes.
Yes.
As these individuals are being serviced along the way, you know, in the same neighborhood, down the same dirt road, there's people coming up and saying, I didn't know this was available. So they're being included along the way within conjunction with these 400-some homes. But we are not offering this to new builds. We're just taking care of the 400-plus and anyone we pick up along the way.
Correct. That is the ask.
Okay.
And again, that would be on a case-by-case basis, presented to the county administrator, and then notified after the fact to you guys.
Okay.
And we have plenty of funding to take care of the homes that she's talking about.
So it's, that is going to be a question because, like I said, it is expensive. You know, the cost of labor, cost of materials is going up, so it is hard to quantify. It truly is. So we still have about 3.4 million earmarked in ARPA that has not been utilized yet. And then we have the 1.6 from the FY22 infrastructure, I mean, the franchise fees. So we do have a very good cushion of what we're dealing with for funds, but there is a potential.
And originally, we were willing to spend almost $4 million of our money at that time. You know, we didn't know there was going to be ARPA or anything else. So you could consider that because of the money that's flowed in, we haven't spent nearly what we thought we were going to spend from the get-go.
We technically haven't spent any general fund money
Yeah.
on these phases. It's all been ARPA. Okay.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
I have a motion for you, President.
Yes, sir.
A move that we grant the county administrator authority to integrate newly-identified unserved homes into the current Phase 3 Comcast build-out designs on a case-by-case basis.
Second.
And he's contractual and serves at the will.
At the will of the Board. Yes, he does.
I have a motion and a second that we grant the county administrator authority to integrate newly-identified unserved homes into current Phase 3 Comcast build-out designs on a case-by-case basis. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Good job.
Thank you, Ashley.
Item 2 under Old Business, Office of the County Attorney, request for state legislation. Good morning, Mr. County Attorney.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Norris, County Attorney. If I could, before I get started, just to preempt the 15 emails that are being typed right now, Comcast does not have a monopoly in Calver County.
Oh, yeah.
FiOS is welcome to come. Any other, any other cable company is welcome to come. Comcast has a franchise agreement, so they get to use the right-of-ways and pay a franchise fee for that. Any other cable company would have to negotiate a franchise agreement with the county. And so it's not a monopoly. It's not.
Anti-Schirman Act or Sherman Act violation. Anybody else is welcome to come here. Comcast bought, I think it was Jones Inner Cable Infrastructure many years ago before upgrading it to fiber. So they actually bought cable already in the ground and found that was the cheapest way to enter the market here in Calver County.
So if you work for it and know of anybody interested, you tell them, come see us.
Absolutely.
We're really happy to entertain competition.
Will negotiate a franchise agreement. They can even have the same agreement Comcast has.
Absolutely.
So John Norris, County Attorney, we're back looking at the 10 legislative requests. Of course, these requests go to Annapolis because of the form of government. The county commissioners only have those powers that are granted to you by the state or necessarily implied by the powers that are given to you by the state. We take these to the delegates and the senators that represent Calver County. Those that you support will see them on the 17th of October at 7:00 p.m. at the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Building, 901 Dears Beach Road, Prince Frederick. First request is for the local preference. This authority again restricts, is requesting authority for the county commissioners to hold a public hearing and get input on creating a local preference that would give a preference to local bidders, those who work in the county, live in the county, have a principal place of business in the county, whatever standards you might propose at a public hearing. So this is enabling legislation, not asking Annapolis to adopt the provisions for a local preference. It was supported last year by the Board of County Commissioners, the Chamber of Commerce, the Southern Maryland Minority Chamber, the Calver County Branch 7011 of the NAACP, the Calver County Minority Business Alliance, the Circle of Angels Initiative, State's Attorney Bob Harvey, and many others. The Director of Economic Development did an excellent job getting the support for that, and she is working now with the new Chair of ENT so that they're aware of the request. And we're hopeful for this coming session, if you support it. Request number 2 addresses panhandling. We were asked last time to look at the panhandling legislation that already exists in the Transportation Article Title 21, Subtitle V, and is available for, to be used in more than half the jurisdictions in the state. In 1977, it prohibited the solicitation of rides, employment, or business, and may not solicit or stand, to stand guard or watch a vehicle. In 2001, it was expanded, and Charles County had the first panhandling legislation. In two thousand and one, it was expanded and Charles County had the first panhandling legislation uh that was adopted in twenty-one dash five oh seven. It has been amended numerous times up through twenty thirteen, appears to be the last time. We're asking that Calver County have similar legislation that was approved for Cecil and Allegheny County so that a qualified organization, meaning a fire, fire company or a bona fide religious, fraternal, civic, war veterans or charitable organization could obtain access to seek donations in the median, but otherwise, there would be no more solicitation in the median. Request number three, raising the formal bid limit, the request is to ex, to increase the formal bid limit from thirty thousand to fifty thousand. We talked about this last time, the inflation of software, for instance, has been pegged at twenty-four percent. Did a little more additional research in twenty eighteen, it was moved from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand. Fifty was requested at the time, but the delegation submitted thirty, and that's what passed. So this is to go back to the twenty eighteen request and raise the formal bid limit to fifty thousand dollars. Solicitations below that would not have to follow the formal bidding procedures. The policy of procurement, as I understand it is, if it's less than the formal bid limit, you can obtain three uh written quotes and proceed with the lowest offer. Request number four has been to the General Assembly at least three times. This is to increase the amount of admission and amusement tax revenue coming to Calver County. This is a state tax that's im- imposed on the gaming facilities that are located in the beaches. Uh currently, Anaronda County gets two percent more than Calver County. It generated approximately five hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue for county parks and recreation to enhance uh and hopefully offset some of the impact of the gaming. Request number five starts the first of the requests from the citizens, uh, the board asked for this year for, and we did open it to the public to submit requests. This one is seeking to save the pollinators by um reducing the sprays, the parthenyl, now I can't pronounce that, the synthetic chemicals that are made to replicate chrysanthemums that are shown uh or used to spray for backyards for mosquitoes that have shown effects on pollinators and the decrease of pollinators population. Request number six, express concern over the use of chemicals for snow removal, snow and ice removal, and they've requested laws be implemented to require state and local government to use alternative chemicals for de-icing uh salt and work with the Department of the Environment to identify what those alternative chemicals might be. Request number seven, uh, spoke to this citizen, he said, this is a request that the delegation is familiar with. He has requested that boats and real estate transfer on death without the need to go through probate. Request number eight, speed control and deterrence, um, in addition to the citi- to the um safety for students program, this citizen is asking for better speed control on Route Four to include the use of speed cameras, now, of course, the commissioners don't choose where speed cameras are placed around schools, which school it is, that program is administered by the Sheriff's Office entirely. This would seek to have speed control cameras installed on Route Four. If they follow the model as they did for Route Two Ten in Prince George's County, the state prescribes where those cameras will be located, not the county commissioners. Request number nine addresses the Stark Law, and that's citizen request that a physician or physician group be prohibited from owning or operating a physical therapy clinic that would be the referral site uh for that doctor or physician group. It's kind of like um not referring patients to yourself in a different setting, so uh that request is there. Request number ten is a citizen request that they've already initiated with the Delegate Fisher's office. We're awaiting to see what the draft legislation might look like, but it's intended to uh address the perception of conflicts of interest. And that is it. What we're asking for today is that the commissioners take a position on requests number one through four, either support, do not support, or no position, and that the commissioners simply pass uh requests five through ten without necessarily taking a position to the delegation of the senators.
Thank you. Any questions? None. Motion?
I move that we should request, I'm sorry, we support requests one through four and move requests five through ten forward for the consideration of the senators and delegation.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? And this is the first time, just so everybody knows, it's the first time we've opened up the process for citizens to send in requests for things that they have. We'd been hearing some concerns from citizens, and so uh we're just providing an avenue for them to get their requests to the entire delegation is what this process is.
Yes.
Trying to do. Yep. All right, if there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If it's okay. That brings us to public comment, you don't have to move.
If it's okay, I'll just stay here. Uh, the board has adopted resolution in nineteen eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process, a copy is found to my left. Resolution fifty-one dash twenty provides that persons are welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the businesses of county government. Persons addressing the board shall refrain from making statements, remarks, conduct or conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conducting of the board's business. All speakers must identify themselves and whether speaking as an individual, we'd be allocated two minutes, or as the appointed spokesperson of a group, we'd be allocated five minutes. For those attending virtually, if you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand function. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to provide public comment, please come to the microphone.
Good morning, Commissioners, glad to see you guys.
Good morning.
Thank you. Uh, I am number ten, okay, and.
And who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm Myra Gowan's and I'm speaking on behalf of Calvert Citizen United, I'm sorry. I'm, I have worked, I'm working with Mark Fisher, Delegate Fisher, on this because I think it's a larger matter and it needs to have some serious looking into. I, I took the matter over to John Norris, the County Attorney, and he says it's a perception, that we're looking to remove a perception of um, you know, backroom dealing or whatever. It's not a perception, it happened, we paid a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the county, to our attorney to try to rectify this in the courts, and he, the reason why I'm here today to just illuminate you all is that when I got the Supreme Court opinion, the Supremes, the seven Supremes said that they cannot overturn state law, there's no way that they can do it, they're not able to do it, they are limited in that amount, in that manner. They did recognize that there is a problem between voting under two state laws, and they're called Sugarloaf and Kenwood. They were put into effect by Mike Miller back in the eighties, the first one was in the late eighties at Sugarloaf. Then Kenwood came a little later on in the early nineties. Mike, God bless him, is no longer here, Mike is gone now, and this needs a look. You need to see, I believe we need to seriously look at these cases because these two case laws are inefficient and deficient when it comes to the code of ethics. So this is what the Supremes said to us in a twenty-nine page ruling. This needs to be done, they said, unfortunately, we cannot help you because of the law. But this needs to be done legislatively, and that was them telling our group that you need to work on this because it does need to be changed, or we wouldn't tell you that it needs to be done legislatively. So in in following what they have, the ruling that they gave, I don't know if you all got a chance to read the whole thing, but I know John Nor- uh Norris did. What obviously happened is that a county commissioner uh from past board voted his own property in, he seconded his own motion that one of the other commissioners made on his behalf. And so that's what set up a five-year, well, actually, it was just three years, three-year lawsuit. Five years and going through the process of the comp plan, and then uh three years going into court. And that's what cost the citizens so much money. But they believed, because they did give funds to us, they believed that it was worth fighting because Sugarloaf and Kenwood state that you can vote your own property in or vote even if you have a conflict of interest, don't worry about it. The, the ethics code does not apply in zoning, that's the nuttiest thing I've ever heard. And I actually knew about uh that case law, Sugarloaf, a long time ago. And Sugarloaf was that a uh board member in the Montgomery County Board Com- Commissioners, that that time, he voted for a Pepco, Pepco was going to put a receiving station up there. Well, he only owned stock in the corporation, that was it. So that's why Mike put that law, Mike Miller, Senator Miller, started that law. But then it went further in Baltimore, and Kenwood cemented it. Kenwood is the law that has made it possible for people to own property and buy property in an area commissioners who have to vote, in an area where they know that, one, they're going to use their inside transactional ability, voting here, to put their property into uh into town centers or rezone the property. So that is the problem that we have, and that's where the conflict comes. And that's where, why Commissioner McConkey sits someplace else now, he's not even, nobody's even heard about him. But that's what happened, that's where we are, and I need you all to understand that this is the citizens coming to ask you to stand up for the code of ethics and for them, okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like you to comment, I didn't think you were going to. I'm going to try to stop shivering because it's getting real cold in here. Okay, my name is Bob Estes, I'm representing Friends of Hunting Creek, and I haven't spoken to you all for some time on environmental issues. I think it's time for a little refresher in that. So, yeah, we we do need, we we all understand that there are environmental issues out there that have been caused by mostly stormwater management failures, uh, I've talked to this numerous times. But we also need to consider uh the future of fixing these things, and also the future of the ordinance is that need to be made more robust so that, hey, you know, fixing damage is a lot more expensive than preventing damage, I think everybody knows that, whether it's your car, your house, or or your shoes, it's all the same. So, anyway, in my discussions with citizens, uh, they're usually in favor of protecting our waterways. I, and I know Commissioner Hans, you've spoken to that in in public speeches, uh, and and in the people that I talk to, yeah, they, they, they want to protect their waterways, it's important to them, I mean, some people are making, making a living or a partial living off of it, and others just like it the way it is. So, as Commissioner Hans, you mentioned earlier, we're a small county, but it's pretty remarkable, some of the things that we've led the state into that have been positive, and you mentioned one today, the DDR system and other, and we're small, but we know how to roar here, and so if we take the lead, maybe others will follow, but for us, it can be overwhelming, tackling these issues, I've shown you the pictures, you've all seen them, it's overwhelming, almost to the point where you don't even know where to start or if you should start. Keep this in mind, we're talking about a decades-long effort. It'll probably outlast the time that you all want to continue to be commissioners, you have to have a far view, otherwise you'll be completely overwhelmed by the problems. One, one thing that is happening these days, though, is that there seems to be more grant money available for that, and my group is uh is looking into that as well to to help fix a few things, and you all can too, you've got a new grant writer, I understand, too, and plenty of people that probably would be willing to help with that. So what we need to do, long-term vision, chip away at the problem, and and that'll affect the culture as well, we'll have a culture where we're trying to fix these things, not just throw up our hands and not do it. It, it's a long-term thing, just like fighting communism was a long-term thing, but guess what? I think we won, I'm not so sure, as sure as I used to be, but uh, anyway, uh, so, you know, I mentioned that uh, and in parallel, you know, in our, in making these things more robust, these ordinances that we have do not work currently, and and we know that, and I believe there's efforts to to fix those, but they don't need to just match the minimum required, we turn our back, oops, too bad, it didn't work. You gotta look at each property, it's not just slope, there's a, there's a five-degree slope that I know, and you know of it too, out at Holly Hills that results in a fifty-foot dive into the sandy, sandy area, you gotta consider not just slope, but the condition of 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 that uh slope in terms of fragility of the property, and where's this water go after it leaves the property? Over there at Calvert Hills, MDE tells me, well, off that, off that stockpile, it goes past the uh, the area disturbance, and we don't care what happens after that. That doesn't make any sense, you go down to the bottom of that and there's a pile of sediment that's ready to flow right in past the, past Greg Bowen's house, and he doesn't like that, you know, and then on into the rivers, the sediment is a serious pollution, as you know. So not just the minimum, but something that really works and prevents damage. Save your money and and it, and it'll do what you know in your heart is the right thing to do for our waterways. So that's probably enough of that, I got one last part of the thing, it has nothing to do with stormwater management exactly, anyway. As you know, I, I sort of had an effort to try to get the county to get rid of that CAB underground parking, I'm glad we're getting the CAB. It's going to be a modern building, more efficient, house a lot of people, it'll be people efficient, it'll be energy efficient. Put a few dots for the birds, too, by the way, so we don't kill so many birds, but anyway, be that as it may, wasn't able to convince anybody in time to get rid of that uh, that luxury parking, but who needs it more than you guys, our handicapped citizens? I sure hope that you all consider, you know, turning a lot of that into, maybe it's in the plans, maybe it isn't, but those people hob- hobbling around with canes and walkers, they need nice parking and a nice elevator, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cormier, you can unmute yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Joe Cormier, and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself today. I'd like to take a couple minutes and thank the Calver County.
Do we need to call line one one?
I attended a lovely field trip for uh Monday uh with, with my fifth grader, and uh Chesspacks did an excellent job uh getting kids out of the classroom and out from behind their laptops uh and working with their uh peers to to learn about our heritage and oyster growth and the bay and the environment, and I think one day out there on the, the river uh was highly worth it, uh, and I appreciate that, so please uh keep adding more staff to Chesspacks because it's a great resource uh for our students, and just say thank you uh to everyone uh for great start to the new year, and we've got some great news from the, the testing results uh for Calver County, so the public schools are looking great, and I really appreciate all the assistance you guys are pouring into it, and I look forward to a great school year, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, uh, that brings us to Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, last weekend, I attended the Taste of the Beaches, which was well-attended. So if you missed it, September twenty-third from twelve to five, North Beach is having one that you can attend. can attend. Also, Prince Frederick Firehouse is having a fundraiser this weekend, Fairgrounds. I hope everybody took some time yesterday to reflect and remember 9/11, and have a good week. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ireland?
On the 30th, several attended Calvert Health Luncheon, where they had a simulator for the DaVinci robot. I'm going to let Catherine talk about that, since she was the genius on that, on the simulator. On the 31st, Twin Beaches, I was over there, Costa did an overdose memorial event where they had a competitive process for a sculpture to be added to the garden at Third and Bay Avenue, which will be a full-size bronze sculpture, which will be unveiled next year at the same event. On the 2nd, Harold Denton, Harold's body shop passed away at 81. Viewing and funeral work for Calvert County, very nice. On the 9th, Taste of the Beaches, Bobby Abner, the legendary Bobby Abner, Senator Jackson gave an introduction for the event. It was very well-attended, a lot of vendors, it was nice. This Sunday is the Annual Waterman's Festival at noon, the boat docking contest at the Waterman's Wharf at the end of the island. I'm sure that'll be very well-attended as well. The 30th, which is the Saturday night of the fair, is the livestock auction. All the 4-H kids been working very hard with their projects, that'll come to the culmination there. It's a great family event. A lot of the children and families have been down there cleaning up barns, finishing up their 4-H projects. Look forward to seeing you there, anybody can be there. And last but not least, happy birthday, Dana Boston. Enjoy your day.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosso?
Thank you. Well, I didn't know it was Dana's birthday. Happy birthday, Dana. Dana's a great gal. Like Commissioner Ireland said, we did attend Calvert Health, and we were able to manipulate the DaVinci. Okay, let me explain it. First of all, it's going to be used, now, here we go, on and on. It's going to be used for cancer patients, it's my understanding. And what we were able to do was, we were able to put our hands into this machine and simulate at a very minute level surgery, and we did it through these different exercises of taking little rings off and moving them and putting them on small or larger objects, but the objects were small, and it will, it's a non-invasive surgery. It's even better than laparoscopic surgery, where the physician can go in and perform surgery on the minutest level on a cancer patient, and it was really, it, I mean, it was just phenomenal to think in Calvert County, you know, we've watched our healthcare system really grow, but to have this in Calvert County is just phenomenal. So that, that was, that really was a great event, and Commissioner Hans and Commissioner Ireland were there as well. And, oh my gosh, I didn't realize on a bill in actual currency that all of this, all of our states are listed, and they showed us by magnification, all of these states listed on a, I think it was a $5 bill, yes. And I didn't even know that was there, so it's really going to be phenomenal for our citizens of Calvert County. I attended on the 1st, First Friday in North Beach, that's always a great time to see our constituents there and to see the, the different vendors that we have in Calvert County, the different products that are out there. I also attended the Taste of the Beaches. I had never done that, and I have to say, when I was running for my, for my campaign and since I've become a commissioner, I am, when people say, oh, we don't have, we don't have this in Calvert County, we don't have that in Calvert County, I had been to Abner's many times before, not to gamble, but to eat crabs, and, and to go behind Abner's and to see that setup with, you can dock your boat and come there and eat, you can sit on the water and eat. I, I just, I went home and told my husband, I did not even know this was here. This is another place to add to our repertoire of wonderful places to go and eat in Calvert County. Last night, I attended the Republican Women Leaders of Calvert's meeting, and it was a very interesting meeting. Michael Kemp was there, he was the main speaker, and boy, does he have a history of this county, and, and it's phenomenal, and it's, it, it just, I mean, you, you'd have to spend a weekend with him to really, to really pick his brain. It was really good. And then, like Commissioner Ireland said, the boat docking on Sunday, if you've never been, and I've only been once, and I plan to go back, it's unbelievable to see all ages docking these boats, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosso. And as, as you've already heard, we did go to the hospital a week before Labor Day and got to play with the DaVinci machine, and you can call Katie in our office and schedule surgery anytime you want. The three of us will gladly remove your appendix, kidneys, whatever you need done. You can feel safe in our hands.
You, you might want to ask for.
I was the worst, you don't want me to do it, I'll tell you.
But as, as she said, it's pretty amazing to think that little, old Calvert Health Hospital is, and they haven't finalized the deal yet. I think they told us that day, they have to make the decision in October. The machine costs $6 million. The state's providing a grant, want to thank our delegation for securing a grant, I think it was 1.5, but they've given them one to play with, and they allowed us to come up and play with it, and it's pretty amazing. And I did ask that day, you know, how do you recoup your costs, you know, because you got to charge more for the surgery, and our insurance company's going to pay? And they said the insurance companies have no problem because recovery time is cut down to zero or in half in most cases. People thought laparoscopic was amazing. This is even finer than that, because they showed us, as Commissioner Rosso said, the magnification, when you look through it, is so tremendous. You think your hand is steady, when you hold it under that magnifying glass, your hand, you're shaking like a leaf in a hurricane. And so using this robot, you know, laparoscopically, you think you're steady, but you're not. And to use this robot, everything is so precise, the, the one surgeon there took a $5 bill, and using that robot, he folded that thing up into a little half-inch square.
Origami.
And it was pretty amazing, and we did have fun playing with it, so just can't say enough about Calvert Health, the board there, the staff, you know, those of us that grew up here know what that hospital, all the progress it's made, yes, sir?
No, the only thing I was going to add was, they did say Calvert was overrepresented in bladder, breast, what else? There was three of them.
Yeah, there was three. Sorry. I'm only a surgeon, I'm not, you know. I can't be held to that standard.
They, by them teaming with Duke University, I think Duke's rated number 22 in the nation.
In the country.
And, you know, for country, for cancer services.
Yeah. And Hopkins is the only hospital in the state of Maryland that's even ranked for cancer, so.
And they have paired patients with Duke in North Carolina that have traveled back and forth as well, that want to, want to make that travel.
So just want to say a great thank you, because it is an independent hospital, they have certain challenges because they're an independent hospital. It's very hard for independent hospitals to operate in this country, especially in the state of Maryland with all the rules and regulations, but I think it's very important to have an independent hospital where the board is made up of county citizens. You know, they make decisions based on our citizens and our needs, and they're in the community, so, you know, it's, it's a lot different when you have a hospital run by some major corporation that's based in Los Angeles or Chicago. So we need to support our local hospitals best we can to make sure they remain independent, and that, that is their goal. You know, they have certainly get requests all the time to merge, and they resisted those attempts, so we need to greatly support our hospital. I'll too went to the Taste of the Beaches. Want to thank Mayor Mahoney for hosting a wonderful event. What I took away from that day was I finally got to meet Senator Jackson's wife. Senator Jackson's wife has the same philosophy as my wife. She doesn't really attend many functions, but she did come that day, and so I got to meet her for the first time in all these years. So, but we did have a good day there, the food was wonderful, and there'll be another event in North Beach coming up. And we just want to remind everybody, this afternoon, 2:00, we're going to do the groundbreaking for our new administration building, invite anybody that wants to, to come out. We're going to have shovel cookies.
And hard hat.
And hard hat cookies. Can't leave out a hard hat. But it is an exciting day for Calvert County. It's something that hasn't been done since this courthouse was built, I assume, so it's a, it's a, it's a good day. So I think that concludes my report. Are you concluded your report, Commissioner Ireland?
Yeah, I was trying to think of a third. I can, I should be, that's, that's.
I know, I know, hey.
Prostrate.
Prostrate.
Prostrate was the other. It's the third that was overrepresented, and that instrument is, is.
I only remove them.
Extremely important for prostate surgery, that's what it was. Sorry about that.
Yes, ma'am, I am ready. I think we're all ready for motion at this point.
I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section to Section 3-305 B1I to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees or officials over whom the board has jurisdiction, and Section 3-305 B8 to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
Thank you.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, that we move into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Hart, we missed you today. Everybody have a great day, and hopefully we'll see you at 2:00.